Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to open up the school, a school board meeting. We've been at the board has been in closed session since 5:45 and now recommencing our meeting. We have no items to report out from our closed session meeting. Sorry about that, little stumbling here. My name's Colleen Martin. I'm president of the school board and I'm so happy you're here tonight. We're going to start with an introduction of our pledge.
All right, thank you, President Martin. And I'd like to invite up Stella Richwine, who is an eighth grade student at Junkins Middle School. She recently was elected the ASB president for the 24-25 school year. And she's a strong student and excels in all of her classes. She is a two-sport athlete, playing both volleyball and track. Stella also works in the gym at the concession stand during much the basketball season. And Stella is filled with school spirit and will be an amazing leader this year. And we're so fortunate to have her lead our entire district in the Pledge of Allegiance. The mic is yours, Stella.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
All right. So one of the things that we do when somebody leaves us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we ask them to come over.
Thank you, Stella. And thank you to our principal, Mr. Penning back there for being here, too.
Go Panthers.
Are we going to start off our communications tonight hearing from the kids from our high schools? It's a new school year and we have new reps that are representing. How about we start with Central Coast New Tech Elizabeth Moore? Elizabeth, come on up to the podium and share with the good things that are going on at Central Coast New Tech High School.
Hey, hello, everyone. It's nice to see you all again this year. Like previously stated, my name is Elizabeth Moore. I'm a senior and the ASB president this year at Central Coast New Tech. And today I'll be giving you all some information about what we've been working on in ASB and the events that have been happening on our campus. But before we get into that, as ASB president, I was given the opportunity of picking our school's theme for this year. The theme that I chose for this year is unity, let's grow together. I also decided to put an emphasis on gratitude during the first semester and compassion during the second semester, just because both of those are really necessary for building unity on our campus. And then moving into some updates about how we've been building school culture within the first couple of weeks of school. Over the summer, our ASB and Link Crew leadership classes met at our leadership retreat to bond as a class and plan for the upcoming school year. Afterwards, Link Crew held our annual orientation and beach night, where a few of our new students and all of our ninth graders played games and got to know each other before the first day of school. During the first two days of school, we had Culture Days. Within Culture Days, all the students traveled around campus doing workshops on the elements of our pledge and playing games while getting to know their advisories. The students were able to reflect and get a better understanding on how our school and its community pledge function. Other events that are coming up include our club fair, dodgeball intramurals, student birthday celebrations, and Student Senate. Our Student Senate is made up of staff-appointed, non-leadership students who represent the diversity of our school and give a voice to ASB and help planning events. So now onto community and academics. New Tech held its back-to-school night last Thursday, where parents could walk through their students' schedules and learn more about their classes. ASB also held a fundraiser by selling pizza and meals to those attending back-to-school night. Now for academics, we invite all of you to attend our event nights and join our project panels this school year to see project-based learning in action. Please talk to our principal, Mrs. Butler, about participating. The first opportunity is our annual Math Art Night on November 14th from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. This year, we have 106 amazing new freshmen who come from all over the Central Coast. Our ninth graders are now working on their This Is Me project, combining their research and communications, world studies, biology, Spanish, and English classes to learn more about themselves and what makes them unique. The students are then going to present this information in front of their entire ninth grade class as their first presentation at New Tech. Our sophomores have just started learning about the American Revolution by listening and learning the history behind the musical Hamilton. They have also been learning about safety in the workplace and chemistry by interviewing professionals and presenting about their careers. This makes them prepared for being safe in the chemistry lab and possibly in their future careers. Our juniors are starting off this year strong with their Salon Night project. This project gets them to think deep about their beliefs and values and politics. They will create a mock political party and present them to the public on October 9th. They are also starting their Egg Bungee project in physics, where they will be creating bungee cords for an egg that will be dropped from a height of 50 meters without the egg breaking. Lastly, our seniors have started looking into starting college applications and looking towards their future. This project is called What's Next? And seniors can choose to research colleges, going into the military, or going into the workforce. Our counselor, Mrs. Ortiz, is hosting a college application information night on September 23rd, where students and parents can come to learn more about the college application process. Lastly, all of our fall sports, band, and theater have started. Hysterical artists are also hosting their tryouts this week. And many of our CCNTH students participate in these extracurriculars and we always are very excited to support them. Thank you so much for listening to my first board report this year. I really appreciate your time and I look forward to leading this year.
Good sharing, Elizabeth. Next up, how about Bridgette? You've been here for a while waiting for us. Come on up. From Napo Mo High School, Bridgette Soto.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette Soto. I'm this year's Napo Mo High School ASB vice president. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of our president, Nora Reed, as she is currently preoccupied at her volleyball game. We started off this year strong in ASB with our annual retreat the week before school started, led by our executive council. We did icebreakers, learned our roles, chose a homecoming theme, and grew closer as a team. Directly after we held our roundup, our students helped welcome everyone back and helped to get all the required materials and information out to start the year. As an associate, as an associate student body, we decided our team, our theme for the year would be 100%. We want to put 100% into everything we do, involvement activities, and energy. All these things and more are what we want to put our all into. As a campus, we have made it a goal to become more clean. Every day, our admin monitors the trash after break and lunch and reports out to the school. Our goal is to be a zero pieces, and this includes our bathrooms and other hangout areas. Our students get rewarded based on how well we keep our school clean in a new thing we have called Titan Fridays. We then kicked off the first few days with our annual Welcome Back Rally. Here, we introduced our well-awaited mascot, Timmy the Titan. Our student body met him with amazing support and we can't wait to implement him in all our events. We also decided on all of our home football themes for the season. We just had our first football game on Friday, which was flash thrown. Our next one will be construction and following that will be Western, Pinkout, and our homecoming theme. The first home football game this year was a success. Our students were the most excited that we've seen them since my time here. Our pep rally at lunch was also a success and it was visually put together and thought out and quite the crowd attended. This year, our homecoming theme will be Wizard of Oz. We plan to start planning it tomorrow. And we recently also got split into our commissions that ranges from print media to athletics. And we made sure to place our students where they fit the best so that we're making the most of their special talents. Our class has been very on top of things this year and we are already planning and hosting various events. We had Jenga and cornhole outdoor lunch, which our student body loved. And we did lemonade on a separate day to celebrate National Lemon Juice Day, which was equally successful. For the new freshmen, our Link Crew put on an ice cream social, which the majority of the freshmen attended and was well-received. So far, we are very proud of our Titan leaders and can't wait to see what the year holds for us. But as all, thank you for listening.
How about Robin DeJean from Lopez Alternative Education, PVA? You can tell us which one. Okay, great.
Good evening, board and attendees. I'm Robin DeJean from Lopez and I'm happy to represent Lopez High School and Pacific View Academy's high school this semester, along with Jay Savala, a PVA student who is unable to attend tonight. Lopez High School news. This school year, we welcome some new people to existing positions at Lopez and PVA. Victoria Burke is the career technician. Michelle Penaflore is our librarian. Amanda Reyes is the attendance secretary and Melissa Penner is the school nurse. This year, our cosmetology program on the Lopez campus has grown, doubled, actually. We changed the class time from afternoon to morning and our attendance has been up tremendously from the previous year. The class is a combination of both LHS and PVA students who are all very excited to learn. This Thursday, we will hold our first community day from 12 to 12:30. These events are a fun time for students and staff to get to know each other and participate in activities together. We will host a field day with basketball, soccer, cornhole, bocce ball, frisbee, group games, and art creation. Food service will provide a sandwich lunch. Stop by if you would like to join us. We just opened our Wolf Market as one faucet of promoting a positive learning environment. When students demonstrate positive behavior, they can earn rewards from the Wolf Market. Last year, staff recognized 20,000 instances of students demonstrating being ready, being respectful, or being a learner. To make our school garden more accessible to students, the facility department is going to help us build new raised beds in the patio outside of our science room. They hope to bring the materials to our site and work with a few of our students to help build the beds. Once the beds are in place, we'll be planting snap peas, carrots, radishes, cilantro, salad greens, arugula, and potatoes. Pacific View Academy news. PVA held a back-to-school night on Wednesday, August 14th. Several new students and families, along the returning ones, got a chance to meet their teachers, pick up a Chromebook, and get their questions answered. Some of the high school students have a blended schedule, combining their online independent study with an in-person class at one of our other great high schools in the district to cover specialized subjects not offered on Edge annuity. We're thrilled to announce that Fun Fridays are starting next week at Pacific View Academy. This new and improved weekly tradition is designed to enrich our students' experiences with a variety of engaging activities. Each Friday, students will have the opportunity to participate in interactive sessions, including reading with our librarian, exploring creative art projects with our art teacher, diving into STEM activities, and enjoying other fun, hands-on experiences. Fun Fridays are a vital part of our program, providing students with the unique chance to connect with their peers and teachers in person. This week, this weekly event not only fosters a sense of community, but also enhances the overall educational experience. We're excited to see the positive impact these diverse activities will have on our students' enthusiasm and learning. That's all the news for now. Thank you for your support. We look forward to a successful and rewarding new school year.
Thank you, Robin. Lastly, from Aurora Grande High School, Banny Wenzel.
Good evening. As stated before, my name is Banny Wenzel and I will be serving this year as ASB president at Aurora Grande High School, as well as a school board representative. I'm excited to share with you the monthly reports on what is happening on our campus, both inside the classroom and outside. The first thing I would like to discuss is our leadership program and how we have been serving our students. Our three leadership classes have been busy building school spirit and school pride. Before school started, Link Crew held the annual freshman orientation, where 470 freshmen participated in. The Link Crew class is also preparing to serve a 100-foot-long banana split to the freshman class, too, by soliciting donations and publicizing this event. In our ASB class, hopefully, we have started a tradition by creating the Senior Sunrise. We had over 200 seniors come down at 6:00 in the morning to have food and create memorize to symbolize the beginning of our last year of high school. Our administrator, such as Mr. Grumbles behind me, came down and made pancakes for us, such as chocolate chip and normal ones. And at the end of the year, we will be holding a Senior Sunset to symbolize the end of our high school career. ASB has been super busy building school spirit by encouraging involvement in Blue Zoo at-home games and matches, is encouraging students to join clubs or start one if they wish. We have already hosted two lunchtime activities and have been busy selling spirit packs for our first home football games. Our AIM Leadership Class, which is where freshmen and sophomores participate in, has relaunched Student of the Week program and have begun celebrating groups on campus, like sports captains, band and color guard, robotics, and FFA. We have also been using an app called Five Star to attract participation. We have only been using this at three events so far, two home football games and our after-school dance. And we have recorded a shocking 76.6% of students on our campus have participated in at least one of those three events, with many of them participating in all three. Next, I'd like to share with you some updates on our clubs and programs. Some of the clubs, all the clubs are back on campus and begin to meet weekly. A few groups I'd like to spotlight are Band and Color Guard and Students for a Better Community Club. Our Band and Color Guard, led by our new band director, Matt Barkus, have already been hard at work since even before school started with Band Camp and have already performed twice during our home football games. Students for a Better Community met last week. This community service-focused club shares opportunities for ways our students can give back to the five cities while earning community service hours. In academics, we have also updated our core values, or what we like to call our Eagle expectations, to the school. We have updated the acronym from Rider to Eagle to fit our school and our needs a little bit more. What Eagle stands for is empathy, accountability, growth, leadership, and excellence every day. These expectations can be found in our two new student journals. This one here is for freshmen and sophomores, and this one here is for the upperclassmen. These journals are meant to use an advisory as planners for the week so kids are able to use their time more efficiently. The reason they are different is because the freshman and sophomore planners are meant for teaching students how to become an Eagle and the junior and senior ones are meant for getting students ready to soar. Finally, in athletics, as I previously mentioned, our school spirit has been growing through the roof. The attendance at our football games has been amazing and it keeps growing every event that we put on. We are looking forward to our teams competing well this season as we launch the elite play in many sports and others in the near future. Thank you so much for letting me speak at this meeting and I look forward to sharing with you and the next month the many more amazing things that we plan to do at Aurora Grande High School. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dorothy. Thank you very much to our students. I've heard so many good things about unity, compassion, giving 100% or more, all the positive learning environments. You know, I think, like we say, that parents, adults have a lot to learn from you kids and you guys are setting the standard for us all. So thank you for being here tonight and sharing all the good things at all our high schools. We love hearing about it.
Absolutely.
And of course, we want to set the protocol for you, just so you know. When you come to the board and we give you a report, you're allowed to slip away whenever you want. We know you have homework and sports and other things that are interesting to you, too. So we're not offended if you politely sneak out, okay? Just so you know, I'm not going to say it every time, okay? To continue with our communications, we're looking for items of interest from the board. Anyone from the board like to share? Trustee, ma'am.
I had the pleasure of attending Pauline Middle School back-to-school night. I have a grandson that's in eighth grade this year. And I was especially pleased by Mrs. Gephardt, the math teacher, who's teaching financial literacy. She has ways for students to earn classroom money, but then they have to pay rent on their desks, they have to pay taxes, they have to cover utilities and food costs, et cetera, et cetera. So I complimented her, but everyone that did their presentations last Wednesday night did a great job. It was fun following the schedule. It was very quick from class to class, but very enjoyable. And they had a nice turnout, too, so that was very nice.
Anyone else like to share? Miss Santos.
Quite a few things. In fact, we had a workshop and one of the questions is, is something that you've done that nobody knows you've done? And I kept thinking about more of it as I went home. I was the eagle at a football game.
At a Aurora Grande football game.
At a Aurora Grande football.
Way before Napo Mo High was invented, right?
And as I was cleaning out my office, I found a lot of little archives. I'm good to save and find history about things. And so tonight, I showed something from Dorothea Lane. And that was built in 2006, that people don't know about. And then also during this time, we started New Tech. And there was a bunch of us went up to visit the schools up north. And I think it was a different type of learning. And we figured, how could we use it in our area? Well, when you speak to the students and realize that we needed this, that's how we got the New Tech going. And then also, some of their students came and visited our campus to let us know what it was like. So that was very interesting. Also, hearing the students speak about Lopez and the beauty school, I got to go to one of their classes and speak to the kids. And one of the interesting things was when I told them that I also worked at a funeral home dressing the hair, they thought that was amazing. And so most of their questions were, what do you do? So it's nice to know that they're going to continue and that their attendance has doubled. That's awesome. And like I said, we had a workshop for us board members. And it's so nice that we get to learn the do's and don'ts of being a board member. And I think as we have our new handbook, our governance book, you will see that we, too, have rules and regulations that we have to attend to. So very important.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we could go on and on with the history of the district.
Oh, yes, and I have a lot of it.
Yeah, there was a time Lopez High School was at Elm Street Park. And you know, there was a time it was at another park. That's where it met.
Anything else, any other trustees? Okay, seen none. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report. It's the beginning of school, which is always an exciting time.
It is. We're off and running on another year. And it's been fun to go out to visit all the school sites for their back-to-school nights. The attendance has been really awesome. It's been fun seeing everybody engaged in the kickoff activities that the principals have at some of their schools and then circulating through the classrooms and being able to see some of the teacher presentations. Next week, we have our Assessment Academy coming up. It's the first of a set of two days, for a total of six days over the course of the year. And we're going to be learning about the science and art behind assessments as an entire district, both at the secondary level and then as the elementary level. I'm going to keep it short tonight because we had our student presentations and that's it for me, President Martin. Thank you.
All righty. Before we get on to the meat and potatoes part of our meeting, I'd like to bring you up to some of our protocols. First off, we have speaker cards in the back lobby. If you're interested in speaking on items not on the agenda or on the agenda. Interpreter Elsa Hernandez, I saw Senora Hernandez here. Is here, if you would like Spanish, English interpreting, please ask. On the last pages of our printed agenda, which you can find out in the lobby, our decorums standards are stated. And I wanted to say thank you again to our security team, I see him out there, for being here and making us feel comfortable. Guidance about public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board of trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any item of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter under the discretion of the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here and those of the individual speakers may not represent the views of our district, the board, and our staff. The CMR is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and at our schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, and sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us and we are learning from them, as sponsored by Tonight. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disruptive participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and civility of the CMR. So we finished off with communications and now we're moving to our consent calendar action items. These are items that are very routine in nature. Did anyone want to pull items, anything from items one through eight?
I do, Madam President. I'd like to pull item number six and discuss item, agenda item number six.
Okay, just six. Let's move forward with the remaining first and then we'll come back to six, okay?
I'd like to pull number three, please.
Okay, number three.
Just to make a comment.
You can make a comment in with all of them after.
Okay, that's fine, that's perfect.
Okay. So did anyone have any, we're going to do six separately, okay? Trustee?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So I'm looking for comments from the board, from the audience. Anyone have public comment on items one through five or seven and eight?
Hello, board. My name is Paul Bischoff. I live in Aurora Grande and I have a question about number, or a few questions about number two, the ratification of expenditures. On page 22 of that item, I see three items that were paid to consultants and the description says Dana Reserve, Dana, sorry, Reserve Expansion. And so I hope we're not spending money talking about a subdivision that just got approved. I'd love to hear a comment about why we've done that, spent that money. And the other questions were, if anybody could tell me what the vendor arbiter pay does without looking at your phones?
I know what it does.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'll finish you afterwards.
No, yeah, go ahead.
It pays school officials.
Okay, school officials, what kind of school officials?
Referees.
Okay, excellent. Good job. I didn't know that. And the amount, $30,000. So I mean, I'd like to have a little bit of understanding about that as well. That sounded like a lot of money if that pays a yearly fee of some sort or if it's individual game fees and that kind of thing. So, yeah.
So you have two questions regarding our item number two, the approval ratification of expenditures. We'll have one of our staff people get back to you. If you could fill out one of those cards, that way we can have your email address.
Yeah, thank you. It was a lot more to do with if the board knew than specifics. My understanding is that the board is an oversight committee and spending that much money, like it felt like it was something that the board should know about. So that was the purpose of my questions. It wasn't specific to the items, but that if the board knew about them.
Okay.
So, yeah. We could have a little bit of discussion about that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the audience like to provide public comment on items one through five, seven, and eight? Please come to the podium to speak.
AR 1240, because I don't have the agenda right in front of me and I don't know.
The agenda is in the foyer in the lobby. You're welcome to get, it's a paper form.
Okay.
None of them have to do with ARs.
Okay, so the agenda items one through eight, none of those are.
Personnel actions, ratification of expenditures, miscellaneous donations, surplus and obsolete items, field trips, inspections, and ratification of a Sloan County memorandum of understanding. Nothing to do with what you're asking about.
Perfect. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what the change, what section that is? The proposed change for today's agenda?
That's not what we're on right now.
Okay, I was just wondering if you knew what section, so I knew when to come up. But I guess I can review it myself.
Go help yourself to an agenda. Okay, so we are on the consent calendar action items, items one through eight, except for six. Does anyone else in the audience have public comment on these items? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the board for comments on items one through eight, Miss Santos.
Yes, I just wanted to bring up the donations that were made.
Yes, I just wanted to, to bring up the, the donations that were made. They were quite large from, uh, local families and I just wanted to let people know that, uh, the amount of twenty thousand dollars from a local family and another amount of a thousand dollars. And some of these donations come from local people who had students attend our schools and partake in our, um, our school district. So I just wanted to shout out to them and thank them personally and from all of us on the board. It's a nice, a nice feeling. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments on items one through five, seven or eight?
Thank you, President. Thank you. Um, we serve our community. Um, it's very important. And our constituents is who we serve, um, our students as well as our staff. So it's, it's important to know. Wanted to make that statement.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval of consent calendar items one through five and seven and eight.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Stewart, second by Ms. Santos to approve items one through five, seven and eight. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Rengier?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item passes seven out. Item number six, approval independent contractor agreements. Ms. Naomi Rengier, you had, um, you wanted us to pull this. What was?
Yes, um, in regards to the amounts and for what the purpose was for, I researched, um, to give you an example, um, cheer bows. Uh, didn't have that much information on the web and wanted a little bit more clarification as well as, uh, the World Beat Rhythms, um, CD package, which is really only seventeen ninety-nine and we're, it, it, it's, it's a great before and after school program, Bright Futures. My children both participated, um, as well as my grandchildren. And I just wanted a little bit more clarity if you can share with me, Mr.
What's the specific question you want for Mr. Iker?
Well, uh, we're paying four thousand, nine thousand, nine thousand. We're looking at CD packages for seventeen ninety-nine and yet it's a nine thousand, eighteen thousand dollar amount. So I just wanted to know why so much? What, what?
Mr. Iker, are you prepared to answer that tonight?
I am. Uh, so the services actually for, I'll start with the World Beats Rhythm is not for CDs. It's actually for music clinics. And this is ELOP money, so it is, uh, principally directed towards after school enrichment programs. And this allows each of our school sites that participate in ELOP to have two, a, a minimum of two clinics per site with the ability to add additional sessions. And those amounts listed are actually not to exceed amounts as part of the contract, meaning there is a set rate that those individuals are paid for each one of the sessions that they will be providing to the students after school as an enrichment. So it's a clinic where they actually come in and spend hours with the students, teaching them everything from rhythm to dance. Uh, as to the cheer bows, that's specific to the cheerleaders at Napomo High School and that's for their hair regalia and sashes for the entire year. So, uh, depending on the season, the event and whom they're, what a sporting event they're supporting or activity they're supporting, there is a variety of, uh, different regalia that the cheer team raises money to, uh, pay for those, um, items.
Have to look good, that's for sure. Um, in regards to, um, Mr. Iker, if I can, can you, uh, World Beat Rhythms, um, the music clinics, are we looking at contractors that will be going through the rigorous research and employment and?
These are the two, the two individual contractors that will be working at the various sites.
Does anyone from the board have any other questions regarding item number six? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to the public. Does anyone in the public have a public comment on item number six? Seeing no movement, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments on item number six? Yeah.
ELOP money is, thank you.
Yes, it might not always be there.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Alright, I'm looking for a motion. Would you like to make it?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion on approval on independent contractor agreements on agenda item number.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Naomi Rengier, second by trustee Kendell to approve item number six. Roll call vote, please. Naomi Rengier?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes, thank you. Okay, we're progressing through the agenda now to items, reports and presentations, resolutions and proclamations. Item number nine, Ms. Dixon is a report, secondary student achievement, graduation rates, UC, CSU readiness, math success, advanced placement scores, career technical education, participation and pathway completion, and more.
And more.
Of high school.
Thank you, President Martin. It is our pleasure this evening to present this report that covers a variety of topics related to secondary student achievement, primarily at our high schools. Um, it's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening Executive Director of Twenty First Century Learning, Mrs. Ashley McCall, to take us through this report and we'd be happy to take questions at the end of it. So I will turn it over to you, Mrs. McCall.
Thanks so much. I'm happy to discuss, um, in a shorter title here, secondary achievement. Um, so it's not to reiterate, all of those tiny points we'll be going through, we'll talk about some of them here. So when we're talking about secondary student achievement, we're primarily going to discuss a lot of the things that happen in high school because that's where it's the end of the line and everything moves on. But remember that that does encompass middle school as well when we talk about secondary. Um, so overall this evening, we're going to look at graduation rates. So the percentage of students that receive a high school diploma. A through G completion, we use this term a lot. A through G, just to remind you, and we'll talk a little bit more when we go through it, are the areas listed as area A, B, C, all the way to G for UC and CSU eligibility. And we're going to dig into that a little bit specifically in area C, which is mathematics. We're going to look at advanced placement as well as dual enrollment options and the participation rate at our high schools. Um, CTE, the number of completers that we've had, the most popular pathways, um, and just the number of students that are taking CTE related courses. Grades is another indicator and we're going to take a little look at that as well as FAFSA completion. Um, that is the federal application for final, uh, free application. Free application. I was like, I lost a letter there. The free application. It's been called the FAFSA for so long, I couldn't even remember. And we'll dig into that as well at the end. Okay, so starting off with our district graduation rate. So this is an area that LuciMR continues to excel in. Um, as you're looking at the two numbers there, y'all notice in twenty twenty-three, at this time of year, our graduation rate was at ninety-four percent. It's bumped up a little bit to ninety-five percent this year, which is always great news. So I want to remind you that this is as of late August when we pulled all of these reports. So students can graduate as late as December and still be part of the class of twenty twenty-four. So the little number of students that you see in that gap that have not graduated yet, we hope to pick up more of them. In fact, we already have, um, via continuing education work and then, um, after December, if they haven't completed, then they still of course have an opportunity to finish through adult ed. Okay, so an increase overall in our graduation rates this year, which is always great to see. So we will dig in more to UC and CSU eligibility and completion. And then the burning question, I know we've said this to you before, um, is what happens to them after it? They meet the graduation requirements, they're college eligible, they request, they, um, they apply. And where do they go? What are they doing? Are they being successful? Um, and just a little teaser here, we have, um, some information coming from the National Student Clearinghouse. So we'll be able to take a look and see what is happening to these students that meet the eligibility. Where do they go? Are they finishing? How quickly are they finishing? That sort of thing. So again, here is the A through G eligibility. So area A is history and you'll notice in the little, um, diamonds off to the right, two years of history is required. Area B is English, that requires four years, but they do recommend five for some really competitive universities nowadays. At least three higher level mathematics courses. Got to get all the way through algebra two at a minimum. Four years is recommended in that area as well. At least two years for a laboratory science, recommending three. Um, area E, this has foreign language, more commonly known as world language, two years required there. Area F for the visual and performing arts. And then area G is at least one year of some other college prep elective, which could also be another, uh, extra course in areas A through F. So over on the left-hand side, in twenty twenty-three, the ratio was forty percent of our students were meeting these requirements, whereas sixty were, were missing some area of the A through G requirement. We've had a substantial increase in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, um, moving that gap to forty-five percent of our students now meeting all A through G eligibility, um, and fifty-five percent of them not. So five percent more meeting the criteria, that's a really big gain and we're really excited about that for our high school students. So now digging in a little bit more to area C with just mathematics. So three years is required and again, it has to go through algebra two. Four years is recommended or even more depending on the rigor of the university that you are attempting to apply to. So a typical course sequence to meet area C would be algebra, geometry or algebra two, or it might look like integrated one, integrated two, integrated three. Anything after that is, um, higher level math and obviously counts as well, as long as it meets the criteria. So looking at area C, it's important to understand this little distinction here. When we look at our graduation requirements, there's thirty units of math that's required. And then when we look at the A through G requirements, there's thirty units of math required there. So it seems at a glance, well, if you graduated, you must have met the area C, um, the criteria, but that's not exactly true. Because we offer some math courses that count for graduation or our local requirements, but they might not be an A through G eligible area C course. So some examples of that could include business math, personal finance, some of our special education courses that give local math credits or a consumer math credit. So just pointing out, just because you got the thirty units of math to graduate, you may not have had thirty units, um, that meet that A through G criteria. So let's look at who did meet the A through G criteria. So when we're looking, um, at the, at the graph on the right, let me try to explain it here. And this is not percentages, obviously, as we'd be huge percentages, they're actual kids, so count. So three hundred and fifty-three of our students met the A through G requirements, three hundred and eighty-six of them did not. But when we look at just area C, we had sixty-seven more students that were able to meet area C. Um, that didn't, that missed A through G in some other area. So maybe they didn't get world language or they didn't take enough history courses. Maybe they missed, um, a VPA, but it wasn't math that was the barrier. So that's always really interesting data to look at because we tend to think of math as a barrier. And for sixty-seven students, it wasn't. They were able to meet that area and now we can dig in further and say, okay, what was it that they didn't meet and, and how can we help them to be successful? Because it wasn't math that was holding them back from the eligibility requirements. Okay, shifting gears a little bit, we're going to talk about career technical education, um, commonly referred to as CTE. So first, let's just look at our CTE participation rates. Overall, we had one thousand four hundred and forty-one students that participated in at least one class that was designated as a CTE pathway course last year. So they could have been, uh, as young as freshmen, all the way up to seniors. Over fourteen hundred of them participated in a CTE course. When we're looking at it, there's all of the students and then you can see by demographic, it's broken down as well. Twenty percent of those fourteen hundred or so students were special education students. Um, sixty-one percent were SED or socially economically disadvantaged students. Our English language learners or ELs consisted of four percent, foster youth, one percent. And then our homeless population was represented there by sixteen percent of that fourteen hundred or so students. So remember to be a CTE completer, you have to actually go through at least two courses, sometimes three, in the correct order. Order always matters. So we want to be, uh, taking the introduction, followed by the, um, concentrator and then the completer course. So this is some really interesting data. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we had three hundred students that were completers. Fast forward into twenty-three, twenty-four and we had almost two hundred additional completers. And I'm going to get into, uh, why we think that was and some of the really intentional work behind that really great increase in just a moment. Um, so twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, four hundred and ninety-three students completed a pathway. If we look at the pathways across all of our courses, um, the top pathway in AG was agri-science. And you can see some of the other popular pathways down listed below. Um, at Napomo, again, agri-science was the top pathway with forty completers at Napomo. At New Tech Engineering Design was the most popular for this year. And then again, we had our new pathway of cosmetology at Lopez. So they are now, um, going to start getting some completers as well. Uh, none for this year, but we're working on that as the program continues to grow. Okay, so let's talk about that really high number of completers that we had, almost two hundred more students. If you remember last year, um, we kind of got up here and talked to you about some changes that we were making to the CTE program. So we, we made those and they are a very intentional work done by Kristen Anderson, our CTE coordinator, um, as well as the rest of the district office, our site principals, counselors, really being aware of what course led to which one so they could explain it and articulate it to our students, um, from the beginning. So a lot of times before that, something was ag and it looked like you were going to be a completer if you went this way, but you actually had to go to this course and it was very unclear with our naming. So we did some really intentional work, changed the naming convention so we can really tell which course leads to which one, um, how to get from the introduction to the intermediate to the advanced course and even a practicum. Um, and as you can see, we really think that this work led to more completers. We'd like to think that the next year, this year that we're in right now will lead to even more because they have had the advantage of really starting with that clear, um, that clear work in course naming and numbering. We can also really easily identify our dual enrollment courses because many of our CTE courses are also dual enrolled. Students are getting both of those benefits. And it helps to us, it helps us to easily identify which of these courses are weighted and, um, count in a five-point GPA. So working on tipping the balancing, um, scales for that high number of participants and completers. Similarly, we're going to look at our AP participation rates. And there was a chart underneath here that had some demographic information and broke down similar to CTE. Doesn't look like that is coming, oh, there it is on the next click. It's coming through now. Um, so three hundred and sixty-four students took an AP test or an advanced placement test last year. We have a diverse AP course selection. Those courses include things like literature and language, calculus A, B, calc C, Spanish, art history. Um, so again, three hundred and sixty-four students took at least one test. There were far more tests taken, um, but at least three hundred and sixty-four students took at least one test. So the little table that has now appeared for you that you're looking at, as those three hundred, of those three hundred and sixty-four students, you can see, um, twenty of them had a five oh four, two were black. Uh, there are RFAPs or our language reclassification with seventy-seven students, one hundred and twenty Hispanic students, one, um, twenty-nine classified as homeless. There was one English language learner, one hundred and fifty-five of them were associate economic disadvantaged. Um, no sped students in this particular snapshot and two hundred and two of them qualified as white. Okay, so we are going to talk about our dual enrollment courses, kind of along the same lines as AP or advanced placement. So dual enrollment courses are offered at, um, New Tech, AG and Napomo. And I should have mentioned on the previous slide, the advanced placement test, important to note, those is just, those are just Napomo and AG High School. We do not do advanced placement courses at Central Coast New Tech High School at this time. But all three of them do participate in dual enrollment courses. So if you're not as familiar with dual enrollment courses, remember you can receive high school credit and college credit at the same time. And when we talk about a course that is dual enrolled with LuciMR, it means that course is taking place on our campus during the school day. Students also have the opportunity to take courses at a, at a junior college outside of the school day. That is called concurrent enrollment. So when we're talking about dual enrollment, we're just talking about our courses at our schools during the school day. So under those parameters of dual enrollment, we had seven hundred and thirty-nine students that were enrolled in at least one dual enrollment course in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So a really high number there. Some of the courses that we continue to offer as dual enrolled are patient care, ad mechanics, culinary, US history and physics, just to give you a few examples. So you're going to see another balanced slide here and we want to talk about, um, the logistical changes and the number of students that And we want to talk about the logistical changes and the number of students that are taking advanced placement versus dual enrollment. So if we look at twenty-two, twenty-three, let's look at advanced placement on the bottom left first. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had about five hundred students that took at least one advanced placement test. That number dipped a bit this year, having about three hundred and sixty-four students that took an advanced placement test. If you look at dual enrollment, the opposite happened. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had four hundred and seventy-seven students taking at least one dual enrollment course. Whereas this year, we just completed, that number is up to seven hundred and thirty-nine students. So we're constantly trying to strike this balance of courses of what's appropriate for students, what interest is driving. And you'll look at our considerations. Remember that dual enrollment is often driven by staff qualifications. We can't just make something a dual enrollment course. The teacher has to qualify, we have to apply with our local community colleges, and there's a whole process in order to do that. AP, on the other hand, has to exist as part of the advanced placement program. We can't just decide something as AP. So we're always working within these confines to try to give our students the best opportunities as possible. Student interest and demand is another factor. Cost, both individual and site. You have to pay to take an AP class, there's not necessarily a cost associated with a dual enrollment course. Credit cap, so dual enrollment sometimes seems like, oh, that's the way to go, but we have to be careful because you can't take more than eleven point nine nine credits in a semester as a college student, or you account for their ADA rather than ours. So there's a credit cap that's associated there. AP, no credit cap, so we have to keep monitoring and balancing our offerings and make sure they're aligning with what the students are requesting and what they need and the UC CSU eligibility as well. So down at the bottom, overall, most importantly, we're talking about how many students did we serve in either of these advanced course offerings? So in twenty-two, twenty-three, nine hundred and seventy-seven students, so almost a thousand. And then this year, even though the way that we've served them is a little bit proportionally different, we served more students, one thousand one hundred and three students were able to access either an advanced placement or a dual enrollment course, which is really great. So grades is another metric. I've included this kind of just for your reference, especially after the pandemic. We talked a lot about grades and how they were moving around and what was happening. So if you look, the blue line, we're talking about high school first. And we're talking specifically about the final mark, we call it M eight or Mark eight, the final grade that they received in the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So in twenty-two, you can see the number of each mark is listed there. Red is twenty-two-three and yellow is twenty-two-four. So overall, slight distribution, but really it's kind of holding steady. We tend to be providing roughly the same number of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs each year, with Fs dropping just a tad from twenty-two. Middle school, similar kind of trend. Again, this is their final grade that they received in the spring semester. So blue in twenty-two, red is twenty-two-three, and that yellowy-orange color twenty-two-four. Roughly the same, Fs went up just a tick. But pretty, pretty normal markings that you're seeing there for our middle school students as well. Okay, yeah, I wrote it this time, so I'll be able to say for you, the free application for federal student aid, lovingly referred to as the FASFA so many times, like myself, I couldn't even remember the exact acronym. But there it is. So I want to point out that we had a large increase in the number of students that completed the FASFA overall. And if we were to show data from twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, you would see that from twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it went up as well. And the reason for that is beginning the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, a law changed and we are required to have all seniors complete the FASFA. Or if they don't finally meet the criteria, we finally end up filling out an opt-out form for them. Whereas before it was just, come on, you should do this, it's free money, kind of pitching. And that really changed in twenty-two, twenty-three. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we had sixty-five percent of our students able to do this, that were completed the FASFA successfully. Last year, that number rose to eighty-two percent. So that is a substantial increase across all of our sites. And notably, Lopez had a really large uptick in students that were completing the FASFA. And that's great news because maybe wasn't always on the radar at Lopez and because of this law, it is now. So significant improvements also due to our ability to track it and have things in a more central location. So the California Colleges Guidance Initiative, referred to as the CCGI, is part of California's Cradle to Career platform. And it helps us really put everything in one place and make it more simple for students to log in, do the FASFA, they're they're trying to integrate more college applications and everything into the same area. Their transcripts port over and it really alleviates having to do a lot of the duplicative work that was happening prior to this. So that initiative would really, I would give credit to this large increase that we're seeing, as well as the work, of course, at our sites and primarily our counselors, getting those kids in there and saying, let's do it. So in summary, our district has a really high graduation rate. We have high participation across all of our programs, including CTE, AP, and dual enrolled courses. And Lucy MR provides enriching opportunities for students to ensure our kids leave college and career ready. So I know that was a kind of beefy report and a lot of information, so I'm happy to answer any questions alongside Ms. Dixon.
Any questions from the board on this report regarding secondary student achievement? It was a lot.
Yes, that's why I had such a long title.
One of the reasons for the high FASFA completion rate is because Questa College, to get the promise, you have to fund for the FASFA. There's no way around it. So if you want to go to Questa for free, you got to do the FASFA.
Another good point.
Yeah. Anyone else have questions? Okay. This is a report only, but I do have one person that has a public comment. Thank you. Jenny Kurt, Kurt.
Jenny Kurt, I'm actually your former, for many years, D-LAC Chair and everything else. And actually, I have lobbied through the union for CTE funding. So my question is to those in charge of the program. First of all, I was also part of the master plan for the English language reclassification for Lucy MR many years ago. So I wish to thank and so proud to see those reclassification numbers higher. But I'm concerned about the low numbers in the EL participants or completers, I believe that's how they were referred to. I'd like to know what the barriers are that have been identified as to the causes. And if they have been identified, what are the resources and the assistance being provided to them to bring them up? And also, as a parent to former sped students, I'd like to address that, those same questions to those, so thank you.
Can you be more specific so I can have the question?
Oh, sure, no problem. So for example, why?
So we want to put those questions very specific, so we can get back to you with that.
Okay, so why such a low number of EL participants in both graphs? And there was a lot of information, I agree with you, President Martin. Wonderful information, but also flabbergasting. So why such low numbers of participants in the EL and sped? And if you have answers as to what the barriers are.
Are you asking for a specific program like AP dual immersion, I mean dual enrollment?
Every single slide that showed, for example, four ELs or one EL. So EL, for example, this very last one that stood out was the AP.
Okay.
Okay.
The graphics were shown for the CTE and AP only.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So again, if you're going to identify the barriers and what is Lucy MR doing to counteract those barriers and be of resource to them? Because it also helps me when I go lobby with the senators that I provide those. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Anyone else in the audience like to have public comment on our secondary student achievement graduation report?
Hi, Ms. Martin, I do have a public comment. I understood and agreed with everything that the prior public commenter made. You seemed to have some issues understanding what she was saying, but to me, it seemed that she was concerned with minority groups, including English learners, as well as our special education students having access and the same opportunities as neurotypical children or white students or other students who typically have more participation in those programs. And personally, not even just, you know, for college readiness and other classes. I think it's really important for this district to focus on those students who are underserved. And I think that it's good that you have people who are in education, who are willing to speak up for those students and hold the school accountable.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment from people in the audience regarding this report, report on item number nine? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the board for comment on the secondary student achievement report. Anyone from the board like to make comment? Mr. Stewart?
Thank you for this, this was really, really helpful. I'm really going to be interested in that, the digging down into that sixty-seven math students, because that was fascinating to me and sort of, sort of what the, what the balance is on that. Because I know there is that perception that, given the cast and the math scores, what barriers are being possibly unintentionally created, so, so thank you, this was great information.
Ms. Naimi. Thank you, I'd like to know the percentage rate prior, pre-COVID to these questions that were Jenny's questions. Prior to to this meeting, I had a conversation with Dr. Fossett in regards to agenda item number nine. And I'd like to know if at all possible, regarding the thirty-six students that we lost that did not graduate, what, what was the reasoning if?
I don't have that information right now, Ms. Naimi, but we'd be happy to see what we can find and report on that in a future meeting.
Right. You know, I work at a high school and every day I'm working with kids, trying to keep them in school. And like, I will say that one of the greatest things we heard at graduation was the dual enrolled cosmetology course and what that's meant at Lopez to have access to that class and how many young people said at their graduation, how that kept them in school and kept them getting their high school diploma because they had a course like that at their high school. So sometimes for some kids, it's just finding that hook to get them to stay in school, you know? And I think the cosmetology class is, I mean, all our dual enrolled and all our CTE classes are wonderful, but that new, different, exciting cosmetology class has really created a lot of fervor to have kids who might not have stayed in school, stayed in school, which is exciting. I can appreciate that, but not everyone is a cosmetologist or what have you. But in to follow that, I'd like to know in regards to, let's say, in regards to, in an example, the thirty-six students that we lost. So are we reaching out maybe after graduation? Or what are you doing? Well, it's, it's important.
I can answer that question, sorry, Ms. Naimi. Yes, we, we, what we have been working to do, I can't tell you the reasons, which was your original question in this moment. But with our adult education program, one of the things that we've done for the last few years is try to identify those students and reach out and say, you were this close, whatever the, you know, those missing credits might have been, please come join us in adult education, or in some cases, come back to Lopez or one of our other high schools to finish so we can get you that high school diploma. I would need to work with our adult ed team to get some on how that's going in this fall, sort of reach out and recruitment effort. But it's something we've really been intentional to try to support those students and whatever the issue could have been for why they didn't quite make it.
Ms. Dixon, kind of at the root of what some of these questions are asking are, what are our intervention systems? So starting all the way from admitting into a special education program, five oh four program, what do we have in addition to that in our schools?
Well, throughout our campuses, I, I will focus on secondary in this moment because we're talking about secondary, but we have a variety of interventions available on our elementary sites, of course. We have a variety of leveled classes. We have double blocks in algebra that we're trying to support students if they're enrolled in their regular grade level course, for example, as a freshman, which is Algebra I. But if they're not being successful to get a support class in that same year, we have a variety of tutoring opportunities offered. Napomo High School is doing a really innovative tutorial process that they're exploring this year that we'll be looking forward to receiving some data and seeing how that's going. Mesa Middle School has done something very similar to that, that Napomo High School has been basing their work off of. Judkins Middle School in particular has a variety of courses that support learners that just aren't quite there at their seventh and eighth grade level to really get them ready for ninth grade, grade level, English and mathematics, so they're ready if they're at AJHS, New Tech, or elsewhere. Lopez itself is in its own way, an intervention for our students who have failed enough courses at one of our comprehensive sites that they need a different model. And so they go there and then, of course, we can't discount Pacific View Academy, which was the foresight of the school board to open our independent study academy program rather than just that standalone program we used to have that provides a home for students that are looking for an alternative pathway to success, for whatever reason that might be. So we're always looking to increase our interventions. And our site teams have been doing a lot of learning around exactly what that should look like and exploring other opportunities too.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Okay, this is, oh, Ms. Santos, oh, Ms. Mayor.
Well, she's got another question, I guess.
No, go ahead. Thank you, in regards to reaching out to the middle school. What are we doing? I know we're focusing on high school, but what are we doing for middle school?
Could you give me a little bit more detail about your question?
In regards to EL, ESL, in regards to preparing our individuals for high school.
I would say our middle schools do an absolutely, an absolutely incredible job, all three of them. They have specialties and expertise in different areas, but we provide an excellent education for all of our seventh and eighth grade students. It's kind of a big question, but I'll just give you a few thoughts in this moment. For our English learners that you specifically called out, we have a variety of staff who support them at each of our schools. Our newcomer program is housed at Judkins Middle School for our students who are new to an American education within one year of joining us here in America, and it happens to be here in Lucy MR that these students come to. They generally serve the teacher, Ms. Lisaya, serves students from across the district. We also have a small newcomer program at Mesa, because that can be regionally more appropriate and easier for students to get to than Judkins, depending on where they live. Our site representatives for our programs, our English learner programs at each site are working on tracking and ensuring that our students are successful in all of their classes. We continue to explore additional supplementary curriculum for that those students are able to access their grade level curriculum without a language barrier, and we've been exploring a new one that we're that will work, especially at Paulding with a teacher there. So for our English learners, there's very robust supports. Of course, we work to reclassify those students and ensure that they have electives. As Mrs. Martin pointed out, sometimes for it, for any student, what gets them excited about school is maybe not their English class, even though I was an English teacher and that's hard to say. But it might be their art class or, you know, something else, band class. We want to ensure that they have those options as well. So there are a lot of ways that we do that. We also work directly with our eighth grade students. Our high school guidance counselors come to the middle schools and meet with them and get them connected so they know about all of their options. That usually happens in the springs. Lots, lots more to do there.
If I may ask another were you aware that we can reach out to the Mexican Council of Oaxar for regarding education? No charge?
I, I've heard you mention that before and it's something that we need to explore in more depth. Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, did you have a question?
Well, I circled the thirty-six students also, because from ninety-four to ninety-five, I thought, well, how many kids is that? And I had a totally different take on it because they have summer school, that they have that option, they have until December to work on that. And I know that there are adults, teachers, et cetera, helping those thirty-six students. Life happens. There's a reason that those thirty-six didn't finish and it could be a whole variety of reasons. And they have until December. And I've heard when Ms. Bowen was the principal at Lopez, they're searching out those kids for adult ed. They're not letting go, they're reaching out to them all the time. So I feel like our district has done an excellent job, thirty-six kids out of seven hundred and eighty-five. Life happens. I experience life, I know what happens. So it could be all kinds of reasons.
The teenagers too.
Right, and they, they haven't let go of them, our district hasn't let go of them, they pursue it.
I'd like to see that data. Okay.
Be tomorrow. Not, not tomorrow.
Oh, we don't make demands like that, of course.
Yeah.
Well, but, no.
I, I have. Would like to speak if you don't mind. When you're talking about beauty school, it's not
When you're talking about beauty school, it's not just beauty school. You have so many options from going to being a cosmetologist that you should know. I mean, you could either dress hair, you could do facials, you could do hair extensions, you do coloring. So it's not just one particular thing. You find your niche and you go for it. I've also, when I've spoken to the different classes that I've attended and helped with, uh, I also told them that they need to take a business course for the fact is if you're going to have your own business, you need to have that information. Also, I, I suggested to them that they take a psychology course because you're, you're talking to so many people. Some people that are, you're going to get through, some people you don't, but you're dealing one-on-one on, on this person. So there's many courses and I hate when they say, oh, she's just a cosmetologist or he's just a cosmetologist, that you have many avenues that you can go through.
Yep. And I encourage you all to make an appointment.
Yes. I would like just to add, um, I came to the United States as an Asian refugee, even though my credit report says an Asian refugee. And the one thing that I find it's most, uh, interesting is that when I came here in 1975, um, there was no ESL classes. I mean, there was in college and so if you wanted to learn, but it comes down to the core values of our family. What we push for our children to learn English. My parents said, if you want to succeed in America, you have to learn English, you have to study. So we have done so much excuses and given so many programs to give to our children, but they're just not getting it. Uh, and, and it has to come back to the parents. We have to push our kids and to encourage them to learn English. Because when I went through English courses and I, you know, went to college and all that, it's because my parents were behind me and saying, learn English, read, write, okay? And do your math. So I, all the different programs that we keep pushing to our kids and all that, it comes back to our family. We have to appeal to our parents and ask our parents to help us in, in reaching out to our kids and saying, you've got to learn English. It's not just all these programs that we have. It, it comes down to the family too. So if I could learn English from 1975 to now and learning English without any ESL classes and just assimilate. Mind you, I didn't have any, you know, taking me out of class or anything like that. I went in kindergarten, excelled at whatever happens. And then I went to first grade and you learn, you assimilate, you have to assimilate. You can't make excuses for our kids anymore, saying, you know, taking them out of class or anything. I just find it so disheartening that we just don't, see that we're hurting our kids when we don't reach out to our parents and say, we need your help and asking our parents to say, English is priority. Everything's around, it revolves around English. Math is around English, reading, writing, everything, speaking is around English. So, you know, with ESL, we have so many programs and we try to pull all of our kids in and all the rewards that we, we, we encourage them. And, you know, I just find it, I'm sorry, I'm rambling.
You're good. It's fine. I think what you're saying is education's a partnership. And every day, five days a week, we get other people's children for eight hours and the other 16 hours are someone else's children. And so it's a partnership between our community, our parents and our, and our schools to help teach and grow our communities. And good for you. You worked hard and, and you did well. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other comments on item number nine?
Thank you. I commend you, uh, trustee fam. Um, all our students learn differently. All students, not everyone learns the same. And, and I think we need to take a look at that.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is report. It doesn't require a vote. So we're going on to item number 10. Report approval, federal funding consolidated application. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, President Martin. Um, this evening's report is one of our annual processes to review the consolidated application, which we know as the CON app. And it's my pleasure to introduce to you this evening curriculum director Brett Gimlin to take us through this quick report.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, so I'm here to talk about the CON app, which is the consolidated, let me go back, consolidated application for federal funding. Uh, we affectionately refer to it as the CON app. So what is the CON app? So annually, school districts submit the CON app, which documents participation in categorical funding programs. Provides assurances that our district is complying with the legal requirements of each program. Program entitlements are determined by formulas contained in the laws and created, that created the programs. Uh, the dollar amount that's listed in the board item is a projection. Uh, we won't know the exact amount until later this fall, uh, after C-BEDs, which is beginning of October. So the Y is, uh, basically accountability and compliance, uh, under the Every Student Succeeds Act or the ESSA. Uh, and our federal dollars benefit our most neediest students. So we track our spending through something called the Consolidated Application Reporting System. Has another acronym known as CARs, which no one remembers. Uh, we electronically apply for, manage, report and pride, provide assurances that our district isn't complying with the legal requirements, uh, related to the specific programs and those federal categorical programs. So here are the different types. So it's basically, it's called the consolidated application because we're consolidating, uh, several programs into this application that we fill out, uh, on a yearly basis. So there's title one, uh, which is the biggest pot of money, uh, title two, title three and title four. Uh, title one, uh, basically provides services targeted at supplementing our instructional program. And schools with higher percentages of socio-economic, economically disadvantaged students receive higher allocations of title one dollars. Uh, and an example of how we use those funds are, uh, high school summer school is one thing we fund with that. Uh, there is a professional, um, a, uh, uh, parent involvement piece to the title one dollars. We do work with our parent community on how we spend these dollars. Uh, title two, uh, provides professional development. An example of that, uh, which came in one of our last board reports was, uh, summer institute, which many of our teachers attend. Uh, title three goes specifically for our English learners. And the, the vast majority of the monies go to instructional aids at our higher needs sites. So our sites that have higher percentages of English learners. Uh, some of those sites are Dana, Oceano, uh, Dorothy Lane, Gerber Beach. And then finally, uh, title four dollars are as well-rounded, safe and healthy, healthy and technology. Basically it's divided into those three pots. Um, and an example of that is we fund, uh, stipends for our sites, uh, for robotics funding, which many of our, uh, sites have, uh, competitive robotics teams. So pretty short report, uh, the consolidated application for federal funding, uh, is up for your approval tonight. And with that, I will take any questions or comments you may have.
Is there any questions from the board on the consolidated application? This is one or, and then we do it again in the spring, correct?
We do it once a year, although I do the work, uh, twice a year, but we do it once a year.
Any questions?
Um, I just had one question. On page. Two, uh, I don't know. It's the nonprofit private school consultations. Can you just explain that for the board in case they're not aware of what goes on there?
I can start the explanation, Mr. Gimlin, and then you can add in anything I forget. Um, as the local educational agency or LEA in this part of San Luis Obispo County, part of our job is to be the agency that provides the pass-through for federal dollars from these title programs to our local private schools, should they choose to pursue them. Um, our local private schools are listed on, uh, page, well, anyway, the last page of the CON, consolidated application, which include Coastal, Coastal Christian, Peace Christian, St. Patrick's and Valley View. Um, we reach out to them every year with an opportunity to consult to see if they are interested in applying for title one, two, three, and/or four dollars and then move through a process to help ensure that they can access those appropriately. Um, the board may recall that a number of years ago, we changed our procedure for how we qualify students, um, for title one dollars. And so now those students can complete a very similar form to our Lucieamar students to identify if they are socio-economically disadvantaged, which is, provides a more equitable access to those title one dollars. Um, so very few students actually do apply, but we give every one of those schools the opportunity to do so should they choose to. So for the most part, those schools choose to access title two dollars for certificated professional development and title four dollars, which is really an enrichment bucket. Um, it sounds amazing, but it's about a hundred thousand dollars and spread through all of our students and a few private school students. It doesn't get us very far, but we do what we, what we can with it.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on the CON app? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment, public comment on this item on the CON app for September 2024. Please come to the podium.
Only because this has a question.
This is.
Funds that are not applied for by the private schools. If that in fact happens, what happens with those funds?
If you have the answer, that'll be a quick one. Uh, they are allocated to the school district. We have an estimated allocation that is listed in the item. It's approximately $2.2 million for all of those titles that we just discussed. Um, and if they do not seek to access those, then they are used in Lucieamar.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close it, bring it back to the board for comment on item number 10, report approval, federal funding consolidated application, the CON app. Any comments? Seeing none, I will, this, I do need approval of this. So Mr. Gimlin can do his magic.
Move approval of the consolidated application for renewal of federal, state and local categorical funding.
I second. Moved by Stewart, second by Naomi Brinier to approve item number 10. Roll call vote, please.
Stewart?
Aye.
Naomi Brinier? Yes. Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Item number 11, approval, res, thank you, Mr. Gimlin. Approval, adoption of resolution number A 2425 dash zero one, certificated teaching assignment options for the 2024, 2025 school year. Ms. Handy?
Thank you, President Martin. California law requires that schools employ only individuals with either the appropriate credential or those with an alternative assignment option established by statute or regulation that allows the individual to teach in California schools. California Education Code provides a variety of alternative assignment options that allow the district to legally employ individuals outside of their subject area credential, so long as the employer follows the guidelines established by regulations when implementing set assignment options. As a part of the memo, you'll see an attachment, um, after the resolution, a table of those that are qualifying for this area. They may look familiar. Um, and it identifies in that table at the bottom, the education, relevant education code that allows that employee to teach outside essentially the option of their credential. Um, and so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board, um, and request that the board adopt resolution number A 2425 dash oh one, certificated teaching, teaching assignment options for the 2425 school year for the Lucieamar Unified School District.
Does anyone from the board have questions for Dr. Handy? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment on item number 11. Anyone in the audience want to speak on item 11? Seeing none, I'm going to close item 11, bring it back to the board for comment.
It's just, it's interesting to see their credential and the, the area that they're, they're teaching. Happened to see Mr. Johnson last Wednesday night and, um, yeah, history and social studies. But the one I found interesting was the foundational level math, industrial arts, introductory music, the business. So there's got to be some interest there somewhere, but not teachers behalf. That's good.
Any other comments? It always makes me miss Robin Metcalf, who is a garden teacher teaching high school drum for many years and doing it very well. Um, I'm looking for approval on this item.
Move approval, adoption of resolution number A dash 2425 dash zero one, certificated teaching assignment options for 2024, 2025.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Mayor to approve item number 11. Roll call vote, please.
Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Brinier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
Martin?
Thank you. Item passes seven zero. And Mr. Iker, up and ready for item number 12, our unaudited actuals.
Thank you to President Martin. This evening, uh, I will be presenting our unaudited actuals for the 2324 school year and the updated revision as it relates to our 45-day revise. Before I do though, I, I must start with, uh, the deepest thank you to Director of Fiscal Services, Mrs. Ron DeSeaver, and the Business Department. Uh, in case you hadn't heard, we did, uh, again, receive the meritorious budget award for our attention to detail in our fiscal documents. And I just want to say thank you for the sharpening of the pencils, balancing of the district budget and providing clear unaudited actuals, uh, and updated budget that I will be sharing as our budgetary, um, conditions do change. So today, as a snapshot, we are looking at the unaudited actuals and 45-day revise. If you recall, at the last board meeting, I shared the 45-day revises as it related to the state's changes for revenues and our, our, uh, estimates and, and how our budget was going to shift. Today, I am adding our unaudited actuals, meaning what we close the books with in the end of the 22, or I'm sorry, the 2324 school year. And it's called unaudited because our auditors haven't had a chance to review all of those copious documents that, uh, the business department creates. So the unaudited actuals for you today, this is a snapshot of some various funds that the board typically has some interest around. So starting from the right-hand column, I know I'm going backwards, uh, but this is for intent and purpose. Starting on that right-hand side, these are our developer fees and mitigation fees that are kept in a separate fund, meaning fund 25, fund 26. As an individual does work on their home that increases the square footage by 750 square feet or more. Or they build a new home, the district receives what are called developer fees and we keep those monies in a separate pot. Meaning they can't be used for anything other than building or expanding our schools or our programs. And they're tied to, uh, you know, classrooms or things that, uh, are due to growth in the district. So you'll notice we had a healthy revenue for last year of just under $1.6 million. And the expenditures were roughly $700,000. And you'll notice that that brought a net change of up to about $3 million in developer fees. This is important to note because what we typically do is we, we save those fees until we're going to use them for a larger project or something that is not just, I don't want to say the, the change you would find in your couch cushions. These are going to be larger projects or expansions. One example of those tentative funds is the TKK complex at Dorothy Lane. Measure I, fund 21 is kept in its own, uh, account. And you'll notice the net change went down over, uh, $10.6 million. That is intentional, right? When we think about the projects that we're doing and all of the work at the school sites, that's everything from the classroom complex at Grover Heights to the recently finished four classrooms at Judkins Middle School. Ultimately, we have about 35 million left in measure I. And I would like to put a big asterisk on that, meaning that's how much there is there, but it's not accounting for the projects that we have already started, uh, DSA process for and money that we know is going to be spent. And I guarantee you, if, uh, Executive Director Stenson was here this evening, he would tell you that they have that money earmarked in terms of how it's going to be spent on upcoming projects. The deferred maintenance fund, you'll notice that ending fund balance dropped down to just under 50. just under $50,000 at the end of last year. That's because the routine deferred maintenance, the district actually puts about $301,000 into that account each year. So that net change, the revenue is going to go up again, and we'll spend that money on deferred maintenance. That could be roots of portables or other things that we're not using long-term dollars on. Cafeteria fund, specific to feeding our students. You'll notice the net change of that went up substantially last year. That is because we were able to qualify for a number of grants and things that we had planned on spending some money on, we didn't spend money on, and then we also got a windfall of other money that we hadn't anticipated. So ultimately, there is a spending plan in place that can be used for cafeteria-specific purchases, ways to enrich or improve the meals, meaning more local produce, local meat. We are actually expanding our refrigerator right now so that we'll be able to have more fresh fruit and other things on our salad bars and that we're able to provide our students. Again, separate, specific to feeding our students. Adult Ed, Fund 11, this is for those graduation students that didn't get their diploma during the traditional four years or four and a half years if you go through December. So our adult ed program is funded completely separate from our general fund, and it does allow for those four part-time teachers who do everything from G and D courses to actual helping students get their diplomas. And I end with the general fund, and this is going to be both restricted and unrestricted. And I want to share that because when we think about the general fund, that's the overall big pot of money that the district has, but that pot is still two separate pots, meaning we have that unrestricted dollars that can be spent on anything and everything under the sun, and then those restricted dollars that are tied to specific programs, whether that's Title I or our special education programs. And we did see a net change of approximately $2 million to the positive in terms of our savings, and that's because our revenue was up a little bit more than our expenditures. The area that I'm going to spend the majority of the rest of the presentation on is the unrestricted general fund. Meaning when we think about programs and we think about things that we have the most control over, that's going to be our unrestricted revenues. And if you notice the difference between our estimated actuels, that is when the board approved the budget in June, to the unaudited actuels, when we actually rolled over the budget, it was really close, meaning it was only off by approximately $200,000. When you think about 160-plus million-dollar budget, estimated actuels and unaudited actuels only being off 200,000 would be like an individual balancing their checkbook and only being off by change instead of hundreds of dollars. So again, kudos to Director Seaver and the Business Department. In terms of our expenses and looking at that difference in terms of what we had estimated versus the actuels, you'll notice we saved a little bit of money. Well, there's a couple reasons for that. One is utilities came in well below our estimate, meaning the solar cleaning and how we keep cleaning those solar unit, solar arrays, that's paying dividends, right? We're taking care of what we have done in terms of our facilities, and that is impacting our electricity bill to some extent. We did also see some settlement carryover, meaning when we have special education settlements, we will earmark that money and say this money is going to be spent for these purposes. I'm not saying that that $1 million that was rolled over will be able to be used for other things, it just means it wasn't spent during the 2324 year, meaning it's still being reserved and it will be most likely expended in either the 24 or 25 school years. We also had some carryover as it related to both technology and materials and supplies. One of the big orders had to do with dock cams. They're not in by June 30th, they don't get billed the last year. So ultimately, there was some savings, or I shouldn't say savings, there was some rollover in terms of funds that will be expended this year. And then also, as always, we have some of those, we can call it budget dust, where departments don't spend all their money or school sites don't use all the money that they had encumbered, and that would roll over for the school sites for the current year. So that's our budget, and now I'm going to give the fiscal context before I talk about where we're going next. So the UCLA Anderson Forecast is, we can call it one of the premier forecasting agencies for the state of California. And this is kind of a snapshot of what they are expecting to see for our 2425 school year, and they're anticipating continued economic recovery. They are expecting increases in terms of personal income growth, and then they are expecting both the unemployment levels that are currently higher in California to get more on par with the national average, as well as to see California's economy, when we think of it in terms of the gross domestic product or GDP, actually being better than the nation, which is what it typically is. So getting back to the normal, if you will. You might be thinking, well, that's good and fine, but what about Prop 98? We always talk about Prop 98 and educational funding. And when there are years where there's concerns about deferrals and how's this going to impact schools, one of the things that the legislature and the governor did was they leveraged the Prop 98 reserves and they funded, they did some shifting in terms of reappropriations, and ultimately maintained that educational budget. So what that means for us is we are still watching, right? So there are still some mixed signals in terms of the economy, yet it's improving. And I use the term mixed signals because when you look at personal income tax and corporation taxes, those are better than actual, but sales and utilization taxes are less than anticipated. So there is still some, depending on the month, if you will, with the state, national government, but we will continue to watch, especially the big three that are up there, those personal income taxes, the corporation taxes, and sales tax. When we think about how that impacts our district's revenue with our 2425 budget, the change since June is we are anticipating a little bit more per student as it relates to lottery and Prop 28, as well as additional grant money for the extended learning opportunities or ELOP. And then this one, I had, this is a fun one. It's new, S M H R S. And you might be looking at, oh, what the heck is that? It is the State Mental Health Related Services, and it replaced IRMS, but don't ask me to go through the IRMS acronym. So ultimately, we did see an increase in some revenues, but we did also see a slight decrease in preschool and the early preschool education grant. There is one thing that's listed as a revenue reduction, and I put an asterisk there, and it's because it's an unanticipated expenditure. It's not actually a revenue reduction, but it is a rather large hit to the district budget in terms of an unanticipated non-public school placement. So we'll continue to watch these changing increase and decrease in revenues and our expenditures, and the first multi-year budget or NYPD will actually be at the December board meeting, but I'll talk a little bit about that shortly. One of the things that we will watch very closely between now and Seabed's date in October is the enrollment for our district. And you'll notice 2425 is highlighted because we are not set yet for our enrollment. So when we think about that date where we put that snapshot for the year, that current year is actually going to be October 2nd, and we will continue to watch what our enrollment does as it relates to the current year. That said, the being down 26 students is actually slightly better than what we had built as our assumptions back in June. Meaning in June, the assumption was based on a five-year trend, which was a decline of 110 students. So even though we lost approximately 26 students from Seabeds last year, it is still up from where our assumptions were in June, which has a positive budgetary implication. So just kind of some high points to look at. The last, or the first two weeks of school, or the last two weeks, if you will, ADA has been awesome, 96.6% district-wide. So kids want to be here, teachers want to teach, staff want to support students in the classroom, and ultimately, it's showing. Our average daily attendance projection was 93.5%. So I'm not saying, yes, we're going to be at 96 at the end of the year. That would be fantastic if we did. However, we can be realistic, the honeymoon is not over for some of the students, and we will see that dip around winter break, and as flu season starts to ramp up, that attendance will change. I'm hopeful that one of the new shifts in the short-term student study contracts that we talked about last month will also impact that ADA projections a little bit. I talked about the declining enrollment, so I won't talk about that again, but one of the things that I'm keeping a very close eye on is our unduplicated pupil percentage. Right now, it's at 48%. And I would say that my biggest concern with why that number is so low is we still have a lot of families that have not completed their data confirmation. So our next step is going to be to continue to work with school sites to promote that data confirmation, so that students that would qualify for free and reduced services, that they would qualify the district towards that unduplicated pupil count percentage. The last day for that data confirmation is October 31st, so we do still have quite a bit of time. Last year, we really didn't start monitoring this until a little bit later, and we were at that time already at 52%. So if the trend continues, last year, we finished at 61% for our unduplicated count percentage. I'm hopeful that we'll get close to that again. I say that because this directly impacts our money that we get when we think of LCFF, that Local Control Funding Formula. Anything above 55% is that super concentrated funds. If we're not above 55%, the district could stand to lose $4 million, meaning the difference between a 61% UPP and a 48% would mean, or even a 55% if you will, would be $4 million. So really important that we promote that data confirmation and that we follow through with making sure that our direct certs are qualified as well for students that qualify for services through the county. The last thing that I want to share is just our next steps. So what are we going to do? Continue to promote that average daily attendance district-wide. I will continue to monitor and work with our school sites on that unduplicated pupil percentage. And in December, as I alluded to earlier, you will get to see that full multi-year projection or NYPD that will include the unaudited actuels that I talked about this evening, the 45-day revise in terms of revenues, and then also any updated expenses when we think about changing of staff and hiring new employees. All of those as a snapshot will be updated in that December update.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the board have questions about the unaudited actuels? No? Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to make public comment on item number 12? Not public questions, public comment.
I'll make a public comment. So Alex Hewitt, Labor Relations Representative for the California School Employees Association. One of the things that we were looking through the unaudited actuels, that we kind of wanted to have a better understanding of, is specifically on how the district zeros out their $65 million ending fund balance. And if you guys look at your executive summary on page seven, that kind of breaks it all down, right? All the carryovers that happen from year to year. One of the things that we noticed, though, was on the reserve for economic uncertainties has increased by 158% over last year's unaudited act. And so we were wanting to have an understanding of where that money is being placed, right? And what those carryover amounts are actually going to be. The other question that, well, sorry, the other comment that we have is, one of our concerns that we have is all the carryover amounts have increased from year to year. And what percentage of that carryover is actually used for the programs that the district is saying, we're trying to carry over this money for these certain programs and stuff? So that's our comment that we have right now.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make public comment on item number 12? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment from the audience, bring it back to the board for a comment. Comment on the unaudited actuels. Well, I'll make a comment for all of us. I thought you brought up some great ideas. I like the idea of promoting the daily attendance district-wide, and you know me, really out-of-the-box ideas, you know, anything you can do, popsicles, PJs, whatever. As far as continuing to monitor the unduplicated pupil percentage, I have been one of those people who have made phone calls to parents urging them to do their data confirmation. I don't know if it means we have a laptop and a district employee at every event, at every school, encouraging parents, especially if they don't have a good working device at their own home, to work on that or to help their student, help their parent work on that, but it's really critical. It's getting, receiving Title I also includes things like having a free SAT exam or having a free college application. There's many benefits, it's not just the food, because now our food's free for everyone. So I'm hoping that we can get creative, and I appreciate the fact that you're monitoring that. And we all look forward to seeing where that ADA and where the enrollment numbers stand. I'm sure there'll still be quite a bit of fluctuation, so we appreciate you telling us as a story. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion and a second on item number 12.
I'll move approval fiscal year 2023-2024 unaudited actuels and fiscal year 2024-2025 45-day revised budget report.
Second. It's been moved by Candell, second by Mayor, to approve item number 12. Roll call vote, please.
Candell?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Stuart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Baum?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. And Mr. Eichberger, we meet again.
Yes, my next, my next two items are in tandem, and they are tied to the GAN amendment. So let's go back in history to 1979, and this is where they set limits on the government's expenditures, and it requires us to hold a public hearing prior to an adoption of these limits. You might be wondering, what exactly are these limits? Well, the calculations are posted, and they are based on the prior year limit multiplied by the percent change, and that percent change is tied to per capita, per personal income, and again, ADA. So this determines the GAN appropriations, and it starts with a public hearing.
Does anyone on the board have questions for item, for Mr. Eichberger on the annual district GAN appropriations limit? So now I'm going to open the public hearing. It is 8:50 PM. Anyone would like to speak on this item, item number 13, the annual district GAN appropriations limit? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:51 and bring back.
Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing at eight fifty-one and bring back Mr. Eichberger.
Yes, the second part, this is the approval of the said calculations that are based on the standardized account code structure or the SACS system that is provided by the state. And you'll notice in the the budget, the estimated appropriation limit for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is eighty-four million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. Granted, this will change as we are still watching that average daily attendance and ADA.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Eichberger on this item? Seeing none, I don't think I need to open this up for public comment because I just did during the public hearing. So I'm going to look for a motion in a second.
Move approval, adoption of resolution A dash twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero-two, district GAN appropriations limit.
Second? It's been moved by Mr. Stewart, second by Ms. Santos to approve item number fourteen. We'll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Vernier?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number fifteen, report governance workshop and handbook development. Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, President Martin. It's a pleasure to present this item to you today, and I'm going to ask for a little bit of input from you after I do. On August twenty-seventh, last week, last Tuesday, we came together for a governance workshop. Like any effective team, it takes a lot of work and effort to get a chance to learn one another and to build the sense of team and teamwork. And to really understand how to operate as an effective governance team. And so one of the things we did was we engaged in a team-building activity. Then we spent a little bit of time digging through and really poring through our governance handbook. And you worked together to affirm the work in there. And the governance handbook, for those who don't know, is a book that a governance team works together to develop protocols and understandings of roles and responsibilities and how we operate effectively as a team. And we set expectations that are clear and transparent and can be easily understood, not only by the trustees, but by the public. I commend you for your effort. Each one of you showed up late in the evening, after work, after your long days. And you really put a lot of hard thinking and effort into the work. And we continue to refine it. You'd made quite a few recommendations. I went back, confirmed with our legal counsel that they were appropriate recommendations, and we built them into the governance handbook. And so this is an updated document inside of a board packet and that you have in front of you in color. And then we ended the day with talking about graduate profile, creating kind of that North Star for the district and the community about what we want our graduates to exhibit upon exiting from, graduating from the CMR Unified School District and the process that we would want to go through. And there'll be more to come on that down the road. But again, thank you for your hard work and your effort and your dedication to the school district and building the sense of team and building your effectiveness as trustees, because it's a lot of work to continue your education. And what I'd like to ask you to do is just, because this is not an action item, it's a report only, is just share one key takeaway that each of you had. And I'm asking you this on the spot because being a trustee is oftentimes on the spot. And so again, so one key takeaway you took from the governance workshop that you would like to share with the group. Back to you, President Martin.
Thank you. I thought it was great. I thought it was fun, it was enlightening, we got to know each other more as a group. But we also, really, we find and looked at different, we each took different sections where we edited and added to it. My best takeaway from the evening was that oftentimes, our mission, vision, and values include the word respect. And if you look through our protocols, they include the word respect. And I really felt good about that.
Anyone else like to share? Sure. Ms. Candell?
I, it makes me think that any healthy relationship involves good, you know, clear expectations and good and that's what this document does. It gives us a framework about how we do our work together and how we communicate together. And I think it's really helpful. And helpful to have us all on board with this work.
Anyone else?
I appreciated the discussions that we had. It puts everybody on the same page. We know exactly what the expectations are. And I thoroughly enjoyed working with my partner and getting to know that person much better than I did before. Ms. Fam. And I look forward to a few more months or more of working with this document.
Anyone else? Ms. Fam?
As a new trustee, I find it really beneficial for to have a handbook that you can actually refer back to for the etiquette, the procedures, the policy. And we actually implement it and we follow it. It's not just a book that we just throw around and said. We actually went through every single part of this booklet and we analyzed it, we changed it, we tweaked it. So I find it that it's a living document that we continue to strive to change and modify and make this a better board for the district.
Anyone else? Ms. Naomi Vernier?
Thank you. So my partners were trustee Stewart and trustee President Martin. And I, it's really important to note that this governance handbook shares with us. It, it puts us aligned. It gives us a little bit more better expectations. However, it's important for me to say this. You asked us to sign, but I don't know why we're signing something that we've already given oath to. So maybe you can share. Give me some direct or clarification.
I, I will go to that. So the last page of the handbook has our kind of our affirmation that we worked on this together and that we agree with this. You're right, you took an oath of office like we all did. And we do live to our oath, but these are also the protocols that we, as the CMR School Board, have designed and agreed to, to abide by. And so I would hate for you not to sign it because, one, it would look like you were absent when you did for this phase. And, and two, I would hope that you, like everyone else, would agree that these are the protocols that guide our, how we do our business of the board.
Thank you, and I appreciate your clarification on that. Absolutely, I, I don't mind signing, I just wanted to know why we're signing something that we've gave oath to, that we serve our community. I mean, and we continue to sign documents along the line, but yet.
We actually don't have that many documents where we all sign it together. Not even our graduation diplomas do you all sign. This is actually one saying, this is a product of our work. And that's why we're all signing, instead of me deciding it for everyone. I do not want to take that credit. I want us all to sign it, to say we all have shared in its evolution.
I want to add to that, Ms. Martin. I think it shows that we work as a team. We all had a chance to voice our opinions and the do's and the don'ts. And I like this, I like that better. And I'm really pleased that Ms. Fam has a voice.
Well, I think there's a lot of wordsmithing that goes on.
Yeah.
And it just makes us
Whether it's better in chow or whatever it might be.
It makes us work better as a team and makes you understand if you, maybe we missed something along the way or we didn't get your opinion about something. This was a chance for all of us and it was a workshop for us board members. You know, if the public wanted to be there, they could have. But it's, it's kind of, this is how we feel as a board.
Our working agreement.
Exactly, exactly. And I thank you for that and thank you for the time that you've put into this.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mr. Stewart?
I just want to amplify that. Thank you all for the time. Thank you for sort of a well-structured workshop as well. We've only been at, this board has been a team for two years, right? So it was nice to get to spend time together and continue to learn about each other so that we continue to sort of build that trust in our governance team, which is why I'm happy to sign this as a public reaffirmation of the team effort that we put into governing. So thank you, thank you, thank you all.
You're welcome. Hey, this is a report only. Thank you again from all of us for structuring such an innovative evening. And I think we, we all don't ever know each other, that getting to know each other builds trust. And in education, we all need a lot of trust. So thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on to item number. Oh, I guess I don't, I don't think I took public comment on this item, so I'm going to backtrack a little. It is just a report. Reports require public comment. So if anyone would like to come up and provide a public comment on item number fifteen, governance workshop and handbook development, they may.
As the only member of the public who decided to attend your last special meeting last week, I do have a couple of things to address. And one of them would be Education Code seven zero five four A. No school district funds, services, or equipment shall be used for the purpose of urging the support or defeat of any candidate, including but not limited to any candidate for election to the governing board of the district. I heard, I believe, three different comments, and I believe they're from board members who do, are running opposed to this election. And they made comments such as their goals being to keep the current board as elected seated moving forward. That could definitely be looked at as campaigning on school district time and using school district resources to do so. So I think remembering our campaign laws and not making political comments would serve the board well moving forward as it's a vote from the public for what we want, for what's best for our students. And I also would like to say that upon observing it, I was, I was told that I believe most of those governing, most of what's included in that governing handbook is not protocol. It is practice rather than policy. So I, I'm, I'm a little bit, I know you were saying like, oh, these are protocols. Well, a lot of that actually is heavily suggested information rather than legally required or, you know, as strong as board policy or AR. So I think that, you know, I, I think it was a it was a good point that Ms. Naomi Vern brought up. I, I don't typically sign anything. It, it could be very minute. I don't sign anything unless I legally have to because contracts and, you know, it just doesn't feel comfortable. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make comments on item number fifteen? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment to the audience, bring it back to the board. Was there any further comments from the board? Seeing none, this is a report only, does not require a vote. We're going to move on to items scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item number sixteen, first reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you, President Martin, and this is just the first reading. I'm not requesting any action on this item tonight. It's just an opportunity for you to review a few recommended changes to some board policies and administrative regulations. Each one of these have come from CSBA and are a result of updated laws or legislation and have been reviewed by the departments responsible for overseeing each section. And so the board policies and administrative regulations that are before you tonight include one on local control accountability plan, both a board policy and AR, a board policy on accountability, a board policy on intervention in underperforming schools, a board policy of involuntary student transfer, a board policy on awards for achievement, a board policy for, and AR for administering medication and monitoring health conditions, and a board policy in AR on discipline, and a board policy in AR on recognition of religious beliefs and customs, and a board policy in AR on comprehensive health education, and a board policy on differential graduation and competency standards for students with disabilities, a board policy on homework and makeup work, a board policy in AR on children with disabilities enrolled by their parents in a private school, and a board policy, a board policy on transitional kindergarten, an administrative regulation on education for juvenile court school students, and then a board policy in AR on migrant education programs.
That was a lot.
Yes.
Thank goodness we do a first reading and a second reading.
That's right.
Did anyone from the board have questions for Dr. Fawcett on this first reading of these board AR and board policy changes or additions? Obviously, we have a long way to go with TK. It's so new that we're bringing forward policy constantly as the state's creating it. No questions? I'm going to open this up to public comment. This is item number sixteen, first reading, revision of board policies and administrative regulations. Does anyone from the audience have public comment on this item? Seeing no movement in the audience, I'm going to close public comment to the audience, bring it back to the board for comment. Beat yourself through it, this is fun weekend reading if you didn't make it through it all the first time. Okay. This is a first reading only, does not require a vote. So we will go to item number seventeen, the second reading, revision of board policy and administrative regulations.
Thank you, President Martin. And so this is the second reading of Board Policy sixty-one, five, eight, independent study and administrative regulation, twelve forty, volunteer assistance. They are here before you for a second time, and it's recommended that you take action and improve these items tonight. Thank you.
Does anyone from the board have questions regarding the independent study and volunteer assistance board policy and administrative reg in item number seventeen? On the board? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment for item number seventeen. Second reading, revision of board policy and administrative regulations.
For over a year, I have raised concerns and questions over Lucia Mars visitor and volunteer policy and how it violates California Education Code four nine zero two four as well as the own, as well as the district's own AR twelve forty, which has currently written clearly acknowledges your understanding and adherence to the state mandated exemption of fingerprinting supervised non-certificated aides, which includes parents volunteering in their classroom and on field trips. Rather than change this practice, the board and its designated representatives have proposed tonight, in bad faith, remove any acknowledgement of the law or Lucia's Mars understanding of it from AR twelve forty. Any vote tonight to approve these changes, rather than to bring your visitor and volunteer practice into compliance, is a vote to knowingly enact a policy which violates state and federal law. Doing so disproportionately affects minority students and deprives parents of their rights. Furthermore, your action exposes the districts to significant litigation in which damages may be awarded and the district loses qualified immunity due to knowingly enacting a governmental policy which violates state law and your constituents' rights. To put it bluntly, I shouldn't even have to be standing here right now because per Education Code three, five, one, six, zero, this board and this school district has no right to enact any program or policy which violates or is in contradiction of state law. You are not the legislation and the legislators have, this has already been introduced. What you're doing in practice and would like to do in policy now has already been introduced in AB thirteen and twenty twelve and SB five, six, five, and twenty thirteen. Both times it failed. And again and again, I have came to Ms. Handy and I have said, if you would like the authority to continue enacting your visitor and volunteer policy, lobby for it because you do not have the right or the authority to be doing what you're currently doing. lobby for it because you do not have the right or the authority to be doing what you're currently doing. And I think that it's important that this board knows that you do, you did take an oath. And there is limits and rules to what you can do. And part of that is written in Education Code. And you can cost this district a ton of money by losing qualified immunity by making governmental policies which are in contradiction to law. So if you do so, I feel bad for the students because they deserve that money that you may lose the school in a lawsuit. And I'm not sure I'm the only person who would be interesting, interested in pursuing litigation against the district.
Thank you for your comment. As stated earlier, we're unable to respond due to the Brown Act. Anyone else like to make comments on item number seventeen, second reading, revision of board policy and administrative regulations? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the audience, public comment, bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. This is a second reading.
Move approval, second reading, revision of board policy and administrative regulations.
The second? It's been moved by Stewart, second by Naomi Bernier. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Kendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We've come to the partner meeting for public comment on items not on the agenda. I have two. Oh, student discipline didn't make it in. Sorry, let's do student discipline, sorry. I'm going to make a correction here.
It's on the closed session agenda, agendaized, so.
Okay, so it's agendaized under our closed session, but we do need to report it out, take a vote on it. If you could make a motion for us on the student discipline.
Yes, I would like to move approval of agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion. One, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number two four dash two five dash zero three from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four eight nine zero zero eight one and four eight nine zero zero eight two. And two, it is further moved that the board adopt the recitals agreements rehabilitation plan and readmission review date as set forth in the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second.
It's been moved by Kendell, second by Stewart, to approve the student discipline for tonight. Roll call vote, please. Kendell?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Palm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Naomi Bernier?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes six one. And now I'm going to return to public comment on items not on the agenda. I have had two blue cards turned into me so far. One is from Melissa Flores, the other from Jenny Curto. Melissa, would you speak first? And Jenny, second, and remember your limit's three minutes. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I am a custodian at Harlow Elementary and when we received our, I'm not prepared, so I just kind of put this together real quick. We had an understanding that we were going to be getting a five percent raise and then we got another email saying that it was going to be two point eight percent. And that's just not enough for us to live in this area. You know how the, the, the cost of living has gone up here. Those of us who rent homes or rent apartments, you know, you're looking at two, two grand easily. And some of them rent rooms and some of them have to have second jobs. We're always told that we're the backbone and that we are, we matter at our meetings and at the summer meetings that they have with the custodians. And if it wasn't for us, the, you know, the custodians, our, our schools would suffer. The trash that would just build up, the nasty messes in the restrooms, the cafeterias being clean, kitchens being clean and, and ready for the school year when we have to do summer cleaning. Supposedly, I looked it up and it said that the cost of housing for rentals has gone up twenty six, twenty six percent since twenty twenty. And two point eight is just not going to cover it for us. You know, we need to have that five percent. We deserve that. And we need that respect that you all talk about having respect. And we don't feel that you are respecting us as a whole, as custodians here at the school district. Many other school districts do pay more and yeah, we could go, but we can't afford to go anywhere else. So you're just kind of just keeping us here just so that we can you know, live on what we have. And so I just wanted to make that known to you so that hopefully you would take the time maybe to look up listings for rentals and see what it really does cost for people to live here with the pay that we have right now. That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The your union and the school district are still in negotiations, but you can follow along with the negotiations journey on the school district's website under HR. It will say negotiations update and you can read through every step of the way, what's going on with negotiations there. Okay, next one is Jenny Curto.
Can I ask a question that has nothing to do with action? Jennifer, can you let me know where you bought that? Because I need it for my meetings. Yes.
I've had it for a long time.
Before I came up to address and even on the way here, I didn't know what happened to where. Constituent, union member, parent, community advocate. Because if you Google me, you will see that I'm everywhere. I'm at Napa Elementary, feeding our families, our employees, even our county employees. Okay? But my question to you, you have made efforts to work together and I understand that during this timeframe, SHRM had their own HR thing going. But Tony Thurman, our superintendent for the state of California, offered after getting together with all the unions and all those memberships that you belong to, CASBO, SHRM, AXA, all those, I'm a member of those too. And he offered the opportunity of the California Labor Management Initiative Institute in June. I am very fortunate that we have good communication and the county office of education, by the way, work for SLOCO. Don't hold that against them. Okay? And I was disappointed to see that the only other district from the Central Coast was Guadalupe. I saw Santa Clara, saw everybody else. I am calling the local leadership, asking, how come you guys didn't come? We weren't told. Every district office, the administrator, whether it be superintendent, whether it be HR, and I point because only I know those are the bodies, I'm not saying either one of you. Okay? Got the letter with plenty of time. This program was to dispel any rumors, misperceptions, how it can be taken that if someone's sitting like this, even the body language, if you're smiling, okay, are you smiling? Are you mocking? Are you attentive? Covered all those to eliminate those barriers of misunderstanding and misperception. I want to know when you're going to invest in your union to realize that you are a partnership and we are constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on public comment on items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, board. I'm Mike Fuller. I want to thank you, some of you anyway. You're helping the economy during this campaign season, buying nice shiny signs and patches and pins and all that. That's a great thing. So I have the tip of the night, how you can protect those great investments. We've found and done some research and found there's micro tracking devices you can put in your signs. We have some people that support us and they say they're going to use deer cameras out for their signs, watching for things. We even have people that are going to kind of be out watching at night for known houses that like to go out and do some of those things they shouldn't do at night. So one of the things, thinking of respect, I would say too, big buzzword, I just respect the laws of our city. The other thing is you're not supposed to put signs out on public lands. I think most all of us know what a public land is or a private house. So hopefully we won't find people doing those things or maybe we will find them because we're going to have people out watching and looking and who knows, maybe, maybe we'll get a bad person arrested this year. So hopefully we'll have a great community that abides by the laws and the rules and I think that'd be just a great example to our kids too that we want to show exemplary character to. So hopefully we'll all join that and we can all appreciate those same ideas and thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to provide public comment?
At the last board meeting, or not the last, because there was a special board meeting, but the previous board meeting held in this room, the board so easily approved four-year contracts with Ms. Handy, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Eichberger, and I believe that included Mr. Fawcett himself. I encourage everyone in this district, and not in this district, to look at Transparent California and look up the wages of our employees such as Ms. Handy, Ms. Dixon, Mr. Eichberger and Mr. Fawcett because those are very large sums of money, much larger than your custodians are getting, your teachers, your IT, et cetera. And when you secured four-year contracts for these superintendents, you, they move up in levels the longer they stay with the district and that is ten percent raises, five percent raises, et cetera, as they move up with those levels in more years. How can you so easily approve four-year contracts for highly paid individuals, yet you have your union coming back to you over and over and over and you have reduced your negotiations with them to two point eight, two point five percent? How is that in good faith and why is it taking you so long? I pay your employees well and all of them, not the ones that just sit with you and encourage you to violate state laws.
Thank you for your public comment. And once again, the journey for negotiations for CSCA and LMUTA can be found on our district website. Any other public comment from people in the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment for tonight to adjourn the meeting. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.